All right, welcome everyone. I have a motion to adopt the agenda. Second, all in favor? You would please, please rise and join us for the invocation.
And as, as we do, if we could also remember what's going on in Jamaica. They're about to be hit by a 200 mile an hour hurricane.
Forward, march, left, 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 left. Color guard, hold. Left, face. Present, colors.
Dear heavenly Father, join us today as we discuss the school business and help us make this decision. It's important to be a student.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Order, colors. Ready, cut. Left, face. Forward, march, left, left, left. Color guard, hold.
Yes, so tonight I am excited to present actually to you all the 2425 Georgia School Board Association exemplary board recognition. And just as a reminder, a little bit about this recognition, the Hall County School Board has received this recognition since 2015, the inception of the program by the GSBA. There are three levels of recognition. An exemplary board recognition is the highest of those three recognitions. It exemplifies your dedication to your, to practices, to policies, to the boys and girls of our district to make sure that we are following practices and protocols to the highest standard as identified by the GSBA. So congratulations to you once again for that reward. If you all would not mind coming forward so that we could present the certificate and get your picture.
By the way, as a dad, not as a superintendent, other than the six-digit salary that you get for being a board member and all of the, and all of the incredible positive emails I'm sure you receive from, from the goodness that you do. As a dad, thank you. It continues to be incredible representative democracy and I, we appreciate you very much.
All the recognitions, but typically we have some leadership hall people here. Are there any of those here tonight? See a couple of hands raised.
Y'all want to speak?
All right, consent agenda. Motion to adopt the consent agenda. Do you have a second? All in favor?
We could pull, there we go. Thank you for pulling those.
If you'll please pull up the.
You've got them.
Meeting dates. There we go.
And again, you've all seen those. Those are the meet, meeting dates for next year. Like to make that in the form of a recommendation that those be adopted and Aaron published on the website tomorrow, please.
Have a motion? Second? All in favor? Curriculum and Instruction.
Okay. The first item under Curriculum and Instruction is the proposal of policy J C D A F, which is the use of electronic devices by students. As you all might recall, we have discussed that the legislation passed this new revision to the law requiring that all school districts address personal electronic devices for public school students. You see before you the revision in the policy. The red is the way the policy was, and we have struck out the old policy. The new proposed policy is in green. And then if you continue to scroll down, you'll see just a little piece in white that is being proposed to remain unchanged. And then again, some strikeout in red and some proposal in green. But if I may, just to summarize that policy, K eight students, as required by law, will have no access to prefer, to PED's personal electronic devices throughout the school day. That is what the legislation passed. We have to adopt this policy by January of this school year, and it has to be implemented for next school year. So let's just keep in mind that you are adopting a policy now that will not be in place until next school year. So as required by law, just as to repeat, K eight will prohibit all personal electronic devices during the school day. That includes anything that transmits information to include smart watches, even smart glasses that they might have now. So again, that is all schools in Georgia K eight, beginning next school year. We had the opportunity to consider grades nine, twelve, even though the state law does not address that. And so after some meetings with stakeholder groups, the recommendation was that we prohibit the use of personal electronic devices during instructional time. So that will be defined as from the first bell of instruction until the end of that instructional period signified by a bell, to include though assemblies and other special events that might occur during the day. Students can access those devices during transitions and also during lunchtime. That was the recommendation of the stakeholder groups to include a unanimous recommendation by your high school principals. The guidelines will be forthcoming in regards to storage, in regards to consequences. Again, we'll use these stakeholder groups, including student groups, to give us recommendations. And my hope is to have those to you by March so that we can communicate those widely and loudly before school starts next school year, when all of this will, will become into effect. Any questions for me?
I'll be the first to say I was an outlier. I would have kept the same K 12. I would have got rid of the devices bell to bell. But again, I appreciate Suzanne and the group getting in, a number of parents, stakeholder groups, principals. But be aware that if we continue to have challenges in terms of following, not having them out in classes, we may be back in the next year with a, with a separate recommendation. But thank you for your hard work.
And I agree with that. I think we're going to have to revisit that because during, in class change time, I would prefer high school kids be interacting with each other and with teachers and not people outside of the school and all that. But you know, of course, we want to abide by what that group said. But I hope they take some serious consideration on the storage issue because we went to some classes on that and what's other school systems have done. It can become very expensive for us. So if that group decides they want things locked up and we have to buy the locking devices, that's a lot of money that Hall County Schools will have to pay just to lock them up during the school day. So I would vote for if we go that route, they're on their own. If they bring it, something happens to it, it's on them. You know, for us to take responsibility is going to be a big, big issue, I think. So.
Thank you. I will make, I will make sure to voice that. Also, just as a reminder, if a student has a 504 or an IEP that requires the use of a, a personal electronic device such as a Dexcom for a student that might have diabetes, then we'll make provisions for that, and that is in the policy as well. To that point also that you've made about changing it perhaps later, our friends in Forsyth County have already done that. They started like we did with the transition times and the lunchtime for high school, and they changed it almost immediately to restrict that as well. So stay tuned, we'll see where we land. Thank you. No, I don't need action on that tonight. Actually, we, it can stay on, on the table for 30 days and then I'll come back to you. It's not required by law until January, so let's leave that on the table for 30 days. Okay. I think next we have up a literacy training update. As you all know, you all allocated a significant amount of money for our elementary schools to adopt a curriculum benchmark. This is our second year of implementation and we're seeing some positive trends. And I ask our numeracy and literacy, thank you, it was coming, it was just a little slow, Director Matt Alexander to share some updates on that training. Matt?
Sure, happy to do that. So first and foremost, want to thank the board for continuing to support this professional learning for literacy. We know that no matter how good the product is, unless we really provide training to teachers, it's going to sit on the shelf and it's not going to be used to the fullest extent possible. So we've really appreciated that training. We began a robust training program last year. As we planned moving forward, we knew that writing was an area where we would continue to need to have growth opportunities for our teachers. So this year, we're beginning with three professional learning cycles at each one of our elementary schools. It's shown on the display there, kind of the way we're doing it. We've had two, one already in every school. In November, we'll begin that second training. We'll have a third training in spring semester. We're planning to have a fourth training dependent on federal funds. And so we're waiting to see if those federal funds will be released. If so, we'll have a fourth training. So we'll have two trainings in each semester this year. The training is provided by specialists from Benchmark. The trainers are former district level coaches who are retired educators who now work for Benchmark, who know this product super well. The way it works is they'll go into the school, they'll divide the school teacher teams into K one, two, three, and four, five. They'll do about two hours of job embedded training, and you can see the cycle there. It's displayed for you that the trainer will come in, debrief about the lesson, will brief about the lesson that they're about to do. In fact, I know in the November cycle, every teacher is bringing a writing sample from every one of their students, and they're going to look at conferring and writing. And so the coach from Benchmark will look at, you know, an example piece from the class she's going to model in to look at how they would coach a particular group of students in deficits they might have in writing. They'll then go as a team into the classroom. The coach will model how they're going to do those, that process for all the teachers. They'll then go back and debrief on the process. And so it's about two hours divided into those three groups. And so we've gotten great feedback from the teachers there. They walk away, I know with this writing, what they're going to walk away with, in the debrief, they're going to then look at their notes of their particular students and working in pairs of teachers, say, here what my conferring groups will look like next week. And so it's really job embedded. It's the best kind of professional learning because it's not, you know, a sage on a stage. It's rather, here's what we can do for our students. So wanted to give you an update and kind of let you know where we are and how it's going. So any questions?
Are we training our principals on that also, so that when they go in and evaluate, they know what to look for?
Yes, ma'am. Last year, we did some very specific administrative training. We did two administrative trainings last year in the first year of implementation. And so this year, there is an expectation that the principals join. Typically, what we're seeing is like a principal may sit in on the two, three group, and the AP may sit on the K one group. Some of our principals are sitting in on all three sessions. It's just, it's time dependent, you know, as a former principal, two hours is a lot of time. And so that is the expectation that the principals do participate in that training. Yes, ma'am.
And I'd encourage you, board members, as you visit schools, to ask those elementary teachers, I hear over and over again, it's excellent training, and that's not always the case.
Thank you.
Thank you, Matt. I can confer. I actually have been to one of those sessions myself, and I was impressed with the trainer. And nothing like going into a classroom and working with students, right? Rather than just telling you how to do it, showing you working with the students, I think is critical to the changes we want to see. So thank you, Matt, for your efforts with that. Next on the agenda, we have Young Professionals Day update. So I wanted just to give you a brief overview with some pictures. You know, pictures are worth a thousand words there. Last Wednesday, our Hall County Work-Based Learning Students held its annual Young Professional Seminar. It was at, actually Wednesday and Thursday, we divided the high schools up there. Just tremendous workforce training. We are thankful to our community partners that you see at the bottom there, who actually came out and gave of their time to prepare our seniors for life beyond the classroom, right? As I had the opportunity to speak to those students, I told them, they're going to blink and they're going to be walking across the stage. I would see them there. You'll see some of the life career skills that they were taught that day, networking, financial planning, giving, receiving feedback, goal creation, communication, the things that I say to students all the time that matter as much as those 23 credits that they must have to earn that diploma. These are the things that our partners in the community are telling us that students need beyond the math, the English, the social studies and science skills that they may gain in, in school. So it was a wonderful day. Our students learned a lot, and I know will be better prepared for school beyond graduation, or for work beyond graduation, life beyond graduation, actually. Any questions about that day? Okay. Speaking of workforce development, our next topic is our skills challenge results. So also last week, we had the Northeast Georgia Skills Challenge, which we had 20 schools participating. Again, on Wednesday, we had a busy week last week with students preparing for life beyond school. But you can see there the success that we had, that we were super proud of in our CTAE program for this skills challenge. So you can see what students were doing. They were doing welding fabrication, they were doing heavy equipment operations, surveying, excavator, training, grading exercise. They literally compete with 20 other schools, and you can see our results here, masonry, HVAC, and even blueprint reading. These students are going to graduate with skills, and they're going to be ready to go to work. Many of them making more than a four-year college graduate will right out of high school. So super proud of these winners. You'll see that we had some first place winners at Flowery Branch in the welding fabrication competition. We also had a third place winner from North Hall, again, in the welding fabrication. It's really awesome to see that not only are their skills being tested, their physical skills like cutting, but they also had to have a portfolio, and they also have to interview. I was at a training myself last week, and they called interviewing the old way, where you sent in a resume, interviewing the new way, where they put you on a Zoom for five minutes and say sell yourself. So these students are already selling themselves here for positions beyond high school so that they're ready. We also had first place and second place from East Hall in our heavy equipment operations, where they had to rotate through the 10 stations. Our masonry, where they had to build a wall, literally build a wall. We had a third place from North Hall High. Our HVAC, we had a first place from East Hall High and a second place from LCCA, and then a blueprint reading where they had to give a set of plans and interpret and answer questions. So I'm imagining that Mr. Cox down there is taking notes and writing down names because he might need some help in these areas as well. So a second place there from East Hall High School. So super proud of our students and their strong showing at the Northeast Georgia Skills Challenge last week.
And Suzanne, Rhonda Samples, thank you for organizing all that. Relevance is what students are looking for, the same thing we were looking for that, I don't know about you, but I didn't get much of it when I was in school. It is the reason that of 25 metro areas in the state of Georgia, Hall County, for almost 15 years now, with the exception of two quarters, has had the lowest unemployment rate in the state of Georgia. That's out of 25 metro areas in Georgia. So thank you. At the end of the day, these kids need to go to work. They need to be able to make a living. They want to be able to support their dreams and their families, and this is the kind of work that translates well. So thank you very much.
Yes, and a huge thanks to Rhonda Samples, she's not here today, our Executive Director of CTAE, and Dina Harper, our Assistant Director for organizing and putting together those programs. Next on the list under Teaching and Learning is the Ivester Donation. We continue to get great support for our, from our Ivester Foundation friends. Just recently, we were awarded a million dollar donation. We're super excited about what that donation is going to allow for our students in the realm of dual enrollment, specifically at the North Campus. So as you see on there, it's going to allow us to build additional science labs. It's going to allow us to bring a CNA, a Certified Nursing Aid Lab, to the Ivester North Campus, which will allow us to double the offering from 14 students per semester, 28 per year to 56 per year. If you know anything about our area, obviously you do, you know that healthcare is a huge, a huge need. We have a huge workforce need in healthcare, specifically in CNAs, and this is going to allow, again, our students to be ready to work. That relevancy piece that Mr. Schofield was talking about, this is the definition of relevancy. In fact, the students are literally starting next week in our, some of our skilled facilities, where they are literally doing their work there.
A natural time also, just to recognize in memorial of Doug's mother, as you know, passed away in the last 10 days. You all were represented with, with some flowers at the funeral. Rhonda and Suzanne showed up for the, for the visitation. I was out of state, so I couldn't be there, but they have been tremendous supporters of this community and of this school district. And, and again, a million dollars. By the way, the construction will be done by your trades and training students, same ones who did the initial retrofit of white sulfur and turning it into the North Campus. So once again, Matt thought we saved $300,000 on the initial. I suspect we'll save a similar amount again on this addition. But if you have an opportunity to thank Doug and Kay, please do so. They've been so good to us.
This renovation will be, will allow us to bring parity between the Ivester Main Campus and the North Campus, reducing travel for our Northern End Schools, and again, allowing us to bring those science-based programs there. Our vision would be that we would end up with 400 students at each place. How awesome would that be if we could reach that goal? Okay. I think I am at item six, which is the field trip recommendation. You'll see the field trip to the Biltmore House for North Hall Middle School recommended to be passed tonight. You all saw that at our last meeting, and we're asking for approval tonight.
Have a motion to approve field trip? Second? All in favor?
Thank you.
Want to also tell you, your Cherokee Bluff High School Girls Volleyball Team, making it to the finals, they'll play Wednesday, I believe, at 2:30 in Calhoun for the state championship. And once again, all of these things help students be connected. They teach skills, the soft skills that are so darn hard to learn, that so many people in our culture just seem to have none of, and sports are so good for those. But congratulations to our Cherokee Bluff High School Girls, who'll play for a state championship on Wednesday. That being said, we're going to turn it over to Jonathan, but he, he's always wanted to be a filmmaker, and I think he was doing a scene from Seinfeld tonight because he brought somebody to sit beside him that most of you probably don't know. So Jonathan, before you start, maybe you'd introduce the gentleman that's sitting with you.
Yes, sir. So I'd like you all to meet Mr. DJ Kearns, who comes to us previously from the Clark, previously from Clark County Government. And so he's, he's joining our team as our Assistant Finance Officer, is going to be assisting me with our day-to-day operations and also with our state reporting and all the other fun activities that entails.
Welcome. Glad to have you.
And financial report tonight, actually prepared by Mr. Kearns. September report is before you. If you have any questions, just let us know.
Or Jonathan goes on, as you know, we're in a tight budget, tax digest issues, and again, it is a little unusual already to be 1% over in expenditures. 15 years ago, that was the norm, because as the year goes on, those front-loaded expenses like curriculum materials, like insurance policies, software licenses, they even out. We're in good shape, but if you're noticing that we're a percent over in expenditures, that's the reason that we built an extremely tight budget this year with the constraints that we had, but we will be fine. So 26% expenditures with only 25% of the year complete. Be glad to answer any questions. If not, like to recommend that the financial report be approved as presented.
I have a motion to approve the report. Do you have a second? Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Jonathan, the quarterly report as required by law of school level accounts?
Yes, sir. So the school level report is before you. This is for the first quarter of the school year, so for July through September. If you have any specific questions about it or any specific items on there, just let me know.
Also want to thank Kara Bornhorst, who does a lot of work with that directly and gets out and supports the schools, but thank you. Appreciate that. And again, if you have questions, just let us know.
Well, if I can point out, the, we talked about the items in red there, please, Jonathan?
There are two items in there. As, as you all know, we closed, we closed Oakwood and we closed Everwood, or excuse me, McEver over the summer. Their bank accounts were consolidated and used as the startup for the same activities at Everwood Elementary.
And just for our guests, would you explain to them what's involved, what is enclosed in that?
Yes, sir. So these are. Yes, sir. So these are school activities, which is to say, these are the clubs, athletics and other activities at the school level. This does not include parent-teacher organizations, which are legally separate from the district. Those are run by parents, operated by parents. The school district does not have say or jurisdiction over their operations. This is just, this is just the student clubs and the student, student-led activities that they, that they, our teachers and our club sponsors at the school level perform.
Thank you. Moving right along.
All right, the next item is technology salvage. There's 24 pallets worth of outdated worthless items on there that.
Aaron, Aaron, not worthless, somebody.
Not worthless, not worthless to us, yes. They're worthless to us, however, they are worth a, something to a third party who will purchase them from us. There's, you'll notice on there, there's Chromebook parts that we've harvested. And as I mentioned back in August, we are, we actually harvested over $100,000 worth of Chromebook parts this summer that we are using for our Chromebooks. These are all parts for Chromebooks that we no longer have. So these are parts that we did not use from, from previous models.
Of workforce development, Dr. Turpin, who harvested those parts?
Our students.
Thank you.
So we will sell these to the highest bidder, who is able to do a Department of Defense level data wipe and provide us with documentation of that data wipe. So those are the two qualifications for us to sell this, these items, once you have declared a surplus.
Do we have any offers before we declare it surplus? If not, do we have a motion? Do we have a second? And one final chance to bid on them? All in favor?
So we have two construction manager at risk recommendations to make tonight. This is for two summer projects for this summer 2026. East Hall Middle School Roof HVAC renovations and North Hall Middle School Roof HVAC renovations. We had four responders on East Hall Middle, three responders on North Middle, and the committee unanimously selected parish construction for East Hall Middle, grail construction for North Hall Middle.
We seem to be getting more bidders on our projects now.
We are, we are. I think that's a sign of the times.
Have a motion to adopt those bids as presented? Second? Any other questions? All in favor?
And next up, we have a funding request. Majority of these were presented to the board at the October sixth work session. The, the other two that have just been added are for Myers Elementary School. This is for replacement of a canopy and two of our larger HVAC units. And then at Ivestor Early College for two classroom units.
Play, talk about the amazing work that a couple of your mechanics do on a daily basis at that old fire station that we inherited up in North Hall. And I thank you, Matt, for getting them some hot water stations and some storage and some locking doors and some, because they've been doing it out in the elements for a couple of years now.
Yes, that old building, we started using it last year, and it has so far been quite a success. We have our mandatory inspection, monthly inspections for some East Hall buses, North Hall buses, and Chishtate buses. And what that, one of the things that does for us and for those drivers is prevents them from having to drive through the middle of Gainesville to get in our shop, which saves those drivers a couple of hours a day possibly. And it also has split the time that our mechanics at our shop had to spend most of the day on inspections. Now, they spend roughly half a day so that they can devote the rest of the day on repairs. So, it's, it's a game changer. And I appreciate you guys allowing us to use that.
It's a study in efficiency, how many buses you guys manage with the facilities that we have. So, thank you. Please thank you, as I often do, but really appreciate your, your folks. Like to recommend those project funding requests be approved as presented.
Have a motion? Second? Any questions? All in favor?
We would like to have a preliminary conversation about SPOSS seven. As you guys know, SPOSS is critical to the school district. It's used for facilities, used for technologies, used for so many things. We have, we still have numerous buildings, fifty-plus years old. They're aging. The two construction managers that you just approved were to replace roofs. It did rain today. It did rain inside some of our schools today. And so, we need to, we need to continue with that revenue stream to support our initiatives. We would like to consider having the SPOSS referendum in May of 2026. And we're going to bring you more information at your December meeting when we do our facilities training about what we've done the past ten years and what we are heading toward for the next ten years with the SPOSS revenues, as well as the, as the, as the bond program.
Thank you, Aaron. By the way, we have talked to the city of Gainesville. With the new legislation, we could actually have it whenever we wanted, and Gainesville and Beaufort have to come along for the ride. That's not the way that we operate. And so, I think we're, we're in agreement that it should happen in May of 26. Want you to be aware of that, be thinking about it, ask questions. We also let the county know that we'd be discussing this tonight, because of course they have their SPOSS vote, which is going out early right now and happens on November fourth, I believe. So, questions, comments, but that's the thought.
I just think we need to start doing a lot of good PR work on that. I, I know, I've been in Hall County schools for forty years, but until you're on the board and you're in these meetings, you don't realize what all our school system does and what all has been done. And lots of money and lots of great things have been done with our buildings and all. And I think when people look at those things, they see all these new facilities we're building and all. I think people are going to be voting against a lot of those type things, but I think for schools, when they think we're really using money wisely and doing things for kids, I think we have a chance to get that passed. A lot of things are not passing because there's been so much waste of money, but I just have to say to folks, since I've been on this board, it's been a very, very frugal board, spending money wisely, saving money, doing great things for schools and kids. And I think we need to get that message out to people, you know? We'll have to start now, because I, I think there are a lot of folks that anything with a tax raise or they're against it right now, but...
It's, it's important to remember that this is not a new tax. This is a continuation of a tax, and we will bring you at, at your December meeting, we'll bring you much of the information that you just spoke about for us to talk about and, and talk about where we believe we should go in the next ten years.
Our schools are in better shape than they've been in during my whole lifetime. I know that. I was at Riverbend, and it was something every day, you know? And a lot of people didn't want that closed, but if they realized, they, they had a person like me running, working on school every day, the facility, not on instruction and all as much as I, I would have liked to have been. So, I think when folks realize we still have a lot of schools that need work, and we're on a great pathway, if we can get another one going, we'll have a lot of our schools in great shape. I mean, I'm looking forward to the next ten years of us being saying, all these schools are looking good. We feel good about every kid in our county going to a great school that's in awesome shape. So, we'll work on that. I'll be certainly glad to help more.
Well said. That penny sales tax has pulled a heavy wagon. By the way, forty, forty percent of those pennies come from people who don't even live in Hall County, who come to play on the lake, to shop, to eat dinner. And so, it's been a tremendous opportunity for us to at least try to stay with our head above water with our facilities. So, well said, Deborah.
Also, when Matt brings us the cash flow analysis of SPOSS to show, it shows where every penny of SPOSS has been spent. It shows where it came in, where it was spent, what we plan on spending it on, all in one report.
Okay. You have for you tonight personnel action items with changes from our work session highlighted in yellow. And if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer those.
When you're ready, like to recommend the personnel packet be approved as presented.
Have a motion? Second? Everybody had a chance to look it over? All in favor? Now, we have time for citizens input.
Good afternoon, everybody. I was not at the last Board of Education meeting because I was attending the Hall County Planning Commission meeting. There was a request for a data center that was approved, afforded to the Board of Commissioners for review. This has been tabled and will be at the December eleventh meeting, but I wanted to bring it to your attention because I feel like you should be involved in this decision. I'd like to show you a map of the location of the proposed data center. And I'm going to hold it up, but I know you're probably not going to be able to see it, but I'll show it to you after.
You can, you can email it to us so we can off it.
All right. So, the idea is that you've got a data center on sixty that is by car, four-point-nine miles from Sugar Hill Elementary School, but going straight distance, it's a little less than two miles. So, this particular data center is going to be called a hyperscale data center. It's going to have three buildings with a total of nine-hundred thousand square feet. These centers typically contain at least five thousand servers, and usually they're used by things like Amazon Web Services, Meta, et cetera. So, the data center will require exceptionally large quantities of power and water. However, there are two issues that I feel that would be important for the Hall County School District. The two-hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand gallons of water per day, as requested by the applicant, creates an enormous output of wastewater. The applicant indicated in a town hall meeting that the output would be taken to the sewer, but there is no sewer at that location. Gainesville would likely annex the property to provide the service, thus limiting the tax revenue to the county and the school system. The second thing is the noise pollution. It will likely be an issue for Sugar Hill Elementary School. Noise pollution from data centers is rarely ever spoken about, even though it's increasingly, increasingly affects nearby communities. The constant hum of servers, network switches, routers, air conditioning systems, and industrial cooling fans create significant and persistent noise levels. Communities living near the large data centers frequently report health concerns linked to the unceasing background noise. Chronic exposure, exposure causes sleep disturbance, headaches, hearing loss, elevated stress hormone levels, hypertension, anxiety, and even cardiovascular risks. I would like for you to consider making a public statement regarding these issues, and invite you to attend the December eleventh meeting, as this will affect everyone in Hall County, including the school system.
Thank you, Susan.
Melanie?
Okay.
Good afternoon, good evening. Thanks for letting me be here. Mr. Schofield, thank you for the, what you said earlier about the sports team at Cherokee Bluffs. My concern questions are around sports teams at Cherokee Bluffs and more, more particularly lacrosse program there. Having been a boys' youth lacrosse, helping that team there, their JV team, before it became a varsity sport, after watching them after their first years of varsity sport compete, coming fourth in their region, twenty-seventh ranked in the state, not too bad for a first year of full-time program. And I can tell you, having spun it up in Gwinnett County, what that takes to get there, having put two sons through college lacrosse, and having one of them come back and actually coach in here in your county. My question is, is that they have been requesting to use the turf fields at Cherokee Bluffs, Flowery Branches, and the same boat. And they've been repeatedly told no because they can't mark the fields. The reason why I'm here is because I've asked both coaches why, and the answer they get back is no. The manufacturer says no. Well, we've done an ORR, one of the coaches, not school-related, and was told, here's the product you're going to, you should use. The teams have offered to pay to mark the fields, and they've been told no. They've been given the band fields to work on. Those fields have constraints, and they've asked to, hey, can we light them? Because if you have a daylight today, you're not playing. So, they said no. I'm twenty-two years retired military. Unless it was a direct conflict, contact thing, we could at least ask our officers why we're doing something and be told why. To sit down and just keep telling them no is not a good answer. So, I've asked, I've called, and I've talked to the, the grounds folks and was told, oh, yeah, yeah, everything's good. We're going to work on this. We're going to do this. The field they maintained then got pulled and given to the middle school. Still don't have a good field. They still don't have a lit field. They don't have working scoreboards, so they're having to work through all these constraints to bring a program into this county. The youth program behind it right now is only at Cherokee Bluffs, but it's open to the entire county, so a lot of Flowery Branches kids and whatnot go there. The problem they run to is about eighty youth, young men right now. There have been talks about having the women's lacrosse start up, but you can't really start a program until you have coaches, until you have a place to practice. And right now, all, on the weekends, they all have to travel, and everybody knows what traffic's like around here. So, if you're a varsity program, you're having to travel an hour at a minimum just to get over to any of the other teams they're playing. So, I'd like to get an answer on why we can't get, use a turf field, because we'll professionally maintain them, or we can't get lights on the practice fields that they're giving them to use.
We'd be glad to talk to you one-on-one. The gentleman standing right back there in the doorway is the Assistant Athletic Director. And again, I'm not being evasive. I just don't remember what they've told me, but you're welcome to talk to him.
I'll definitely do that.
And we'll certainly be glad to, to talk with you about that. And thank you for coming in and what you do. And thank you for your service.
We are part of a group that concerns citizens. I'm sure you're familiar with it. It's a group on Facebook. We've grown to about eighty-nine-hundred people, and we had a mother contact us about a book that's being read, and I'm sure you're familiar with it because you've received some emails, and the book was called Sold. And it's about sex, a stepfather who has sex trafficked his daughter into, into sex trafficking. She thought she was going to be a maid and a, for a family. And so, before I came to the meeting, I went to the library and I read the book. And the mother, I guess, didn't come tonight, but what, what really concerned me about the book, well, first of all, I guess it was...
I'll give you just a second when, when I finish. Just let me explain.
Okay. I just want to know, I want to be able to have my time, but go ahead.
You can.
Okay.
That book, we have a procedure of selecting books for our media center that has been put in place. When was it put in place?
Four years.
About four years ago. That particular book was purchased before that procedure was put in place. They are in the process of reviewing all the books that we had prior to that. The parent has been talked with, has, has come up with a discussion. They went through the process, looked at the book, and it has been removed.
Okay.
So, that, that was the process. Once we got the, got the complaint from the parent, it was taken care of.
Okay, great.
So, just, just so we're aware that that was resolved with the parent. But go ahead and finish your time.
But my concern was, it wasn't about the language or what was going on in the book, but what I was concerned about is it, it provides low self-esteem for women. I mean, in the first part of the book, it says, we are lucky to even have a man. And I thought, this really is low self-esteem. And then it talks about how women are not to have eye contact with men. So, all of these things, if you read the book, it, it just talks, it just does not provide for women to be leaders in, in the group. So, you know, these kind of books, it's not what, it's, I mean, it's, first of all, it's not good about sex trafficking, but it's also not good about women and low self-esteem. So, in the future, if we could just be cognizant about women and self-esteem and to provide leaders in women, that's the kind of thing that we really want to be conscious of. But thank you.
By the way, one of the things we do as a school district, you ought to be aware of what's going on. Our students need to be aware of what's going on in terms of sex trafficking. It is real. Atlanta is the hub of sex trafficking in this country. And by the way, when, when you hear about the way certain groups are treated, I hope it shocks the conscience and that people stand up and say, that is not right, that is not wrong. No, we're done now. That is not right. We're done. But, but again...
I should be able to...
No, it's, help yourself.
Yeah, but this is not a conversation for an eleven-year-old, okay?
When did an eleven-year-old read that book?
It was an eleven-year-old.
This was a high school class we were talking about.
The minimum for the book was thirteen. The reviews were for thirteen-year-olds, and you know, this is inappropriate for an eleven-year-old. That's all I have to say.
I would agree.
I have a paper. Can I bring it to you?
Sure. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Kristy Haggard. I volunteer lead an orchestra club at Spout Springs School of Enrichment. I'm a mom of four daughters that go to schools in Hall County. They play lacrosse, actually, and we would love to have lacrosse in Hall County, but that's a orchestra, or a thing for another time. So, I'm here tonight because I would love to see strings in Hall County. I talked to Mr. Baloo about eighteen months ago and said, how do you feel about this? And he said, I would love to see it, too. So, we kind of collaborated and talked about, how do we, how do we start orchestras where there haven't been any in the past? And so, I started with eighteen students last year. They loved it. We had a great season. This year, we have twenty-eight students. There's been a lot of investment from families. Their parents rent their instruments every month for them to perform with us and play. We've received a grant to buy some cellos. We've received community partnerships with local string suppliers that have helped us to obtain instruments for kids that might not be able to afford one. But thankfully, we've really had a lot of outpouring from families to say, yes, we want this. And, and I would love to see there be an avenue for these beautiful children to be able to continue to learn violin or viola or cello. Band is wonderful. I love band. I have an eighth grader playing clarinet and a sixth grader on French horn. I love band. There's something special about strings that isn't the same, and they're very complimentary. I love all of the musics. Um, I uh, I feel like orchestra reaches a special group of kids that otherwise sometimes get missed, and it gives them a chance to really feel like they belong to a team, to a group, and it gives them a sense of belonging. And um, it's been touching for me to see parents reach out and say, thank you so much. Um, a fourth grade teacher came up and said, I didn't know Emmy talked, like she never talks in school. And she passed the orchestra room and she was up and bubbly and talking with friends and getting ready to play. And it's, it's a beautiful thing to see. It's beautiful to see families who are grieving the loss of, of an infant and say, this really helped us to heal and to find peace and move forward. And so I've seen a lot of good things come from even this small group. And um, and I would love to, I know it's a big ask. It's hard to say, can you find money in the budget? But even if it was half-credit positions at a handful of schools in the South, um, I suggested the Cherokee Bluff, Flowery Branch, and West Hall because those are the feeder schools where there's already strings in elementary.
Thank you, and thank you for what you do. By the way, you might not be aware, but uh McKever Elementary had a strings program that I think they've taken to Everwood. Walk 'em out, and my daughter uh played violin at the Mount Multiple Intelligences Academy for several years. And remind Mr. Blue that when he asks for funds to support something like that, he'll probably get a yes for some of the things that you need. I'm thankful you have a parent group that can afford that. Uh, but not all of our schools have that, and we would really like to support that, so thank you for what you're doing. And, and again, we'll certainly be glad to keep orchestra on the table in terms of possibilities for the future.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, that was all, and now we have executive session. Still have the executive session?
Harley, do you need, no, we don't need it.
Mr. Chair?
In check that you wanted to speak?
Frank, you had a no by now.
Yeah, Frank, you missed the checkbox, all right, go ahead. Jody? Yeah, you had checked that you didn't want to speak. But you're, you're welcome to if you'd like.
Name is Jody White. Um, I guess when I was sitting here listening to the reading curriculum, you know, I listened to a gentleman speak last week at an event, and it just, it just, just kind of hit home to me. He said, you know, what happened to Hooked on Phonics? You know, I can't remember a single person that I went to school with that didn't know how to read. Now, I went to a small school, but I can tell you, there wasn't a single person in my class that didn't know how to read. I have a two-year-old granddaughter, and you know what? I'm taking flashcards and we are learning the sounds of the letters. So I don't care how much money you throw at a program, you're not going to teach a kid to read by confusing them like we're doing with the math programs. We need to stop doing that. Simple, basic, simplicity. Why, why are we missing the simplicity? Our reading levels keep going down, but our spending keeps going up. I'm, I'm very confused about that. Are we twisted with how we're, we're teaching this? Because, like I said, I have a two-year-old granddaughter that I'm starting to teach to learn how to read. I mean, she's picking it up like this. I also had a child that had learning disabilities. I took her out of the public school. I brought her home, and guess what? Within two months, the girl was reading like this because I used flashcards and I taught her how to say A, B, C, D, and the sounds. It's, stop throwing money at something that is so simple. Simplicity sometimes is the best thing we could do for the children. I just think we're overcomplicating things when we throw this group and this group and let's have this bubble and this bubble and this bu- and this. What bu- they're going, looking around saying, what bubble am I in? Instead of learning A, B, C, D, E, F, G. I mean, come on now. We all have to agree that we all lived in a time where we were simplicity. I don't think any of your moms said, now you're in bubble A, now you're in bubble B, you're in bubble C. I don't think any of your mothers told you that. So sometimes maybe just go back to the basics and the simplicity and see if that works better.
I appreciate the opportunity to encourage you to include um photovoltaics in the construction projects that you have planned for the remaining five years in the ten-year plan. Uh, this is information from a book called Human Nature. We understand what is, exactly what is causing present-day climate change, human beings, particularly the wealthy ones. This means residents of rich counties are guilty, uh, and we should feel that guilt, but it also means we know exactly how to stop the warming. Imagine if greenhouse gases were not the culprit. Imagine if climate change was caused by a force beyond our understanding or control. That would be a far more terrifying world, if less shameful one. But the same science that establishes that greenhouse gases are responsible for climate change also shows that when we cease to admit them, the global temperature will stabilize. When we accept our own responsibility, we gain a powerful truth. How bad it gets is up to us. The future is still in human hands. Changes in global temperature are going to transform familiar places into different climates. The stable climate that has been so kind to our species could be irrevocably transformed if we don't cease carbon emissions. Shifts between climates have historically been associated with large-scale extinctions as even the most adept and dominant species cannot survive certain physical conditions. Refusing to take action to reduce the carbon dioxide emissions of the Hall County Public School facilities is irresponsible and leads to guilt. You must act wisely. And a special note, Iceland reports the presence of mosquitoes for the first time. For the first time in recorded history, mosquitoes have been detected in Iceland. This discovery is linked to a warming climate and increased international transportation, which are allowing new species, including these mosquitoes, to survive in Nordic, in a Nordic nation. Antarctica remains the only continent currently uh believed to be free of mosquitoes. You need to act. All right, now, back to where we were. Motion to adjourn. Second? All in favor? Thank y'all for coming tonight.